Good afternoon and welcome to the, to the public hearing for Columbus City Council's Health and Human Services, Finance, and Workforce Development Committees. I'm Councilmember Priscilla Tyson and I chair those committees. I also want to recognize someone who's with us this afternoon, who was going to be an intern in our office for this, for the remainder of this year and the school year of ending next June is Matthew Nolling, who is a junior at CAS. So we're excited that he is going to be with us and just appreciate Matthew. Before we begin, please be aware that this hearing is being recorded for rebroadcast on CTV, the Columbus Government Television Channel 3. The rebroadcast schedule is available at www.columbus.gov. This afternoon's hearing is one in a series of bi-weekly committee hearings that I hold in order to review legislation in the committees that I chair. This includes Health and Human Services, Finance, and Workforce Development Committees. The goal of these hearings is to promote transparency and provide an opportunity for city residents to learn and speak on legislation that impacts their lives. There will be on occasions when a committee is not covered because legislation is not always scheduled for each committee. The intent of each hearing is to review legislation that will be on city council's agenda for the following two weeks. Today we'll hear information on legislation in Finance and Health and Human Services. We'll review legislation that will appear on the council's agenda on either October 29th, I'm sorry, October 19th or the 26th. We have several speakers on the agenda this afternoon representing various departments. We have Dave Bush, who was the Deputy Director of Finance and Management Department, Talia Brown, Deputy Treasurer for the Treasurer's Office, and Dr. Teresa Long, who's our Health Commissioner from Columbus Public Health. Before I begin with legislation in the Finance Committee by asking Dave Bush to provide us with updates on legislation for his department. Deputy Director Bush, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Councilwoman Tyson. I appreciate you giving us the opportunity to present these. Today we have 19 ordinances for your consideration. Maybe the others wanted to go first, huh? The first ordinance for your committee is Ordinance 2412-2015. This is an ordinance for an easement for AEP. As you know, we're funded to construct our fourth CNG station on the west side off, on Krieger off of Georgesville Road. As part of that project, we need AEP service through a portion of it in order to ensure that we have to grant them a, a non-exclusive electric easement in order for us to have the proper power. That ordinance doesn't involve the expenditure of any monies, it's just an easement. The second ordinance is Ordinance 2428, and this is, authorizes the Finance Department to authorize or modify a contract with Knight Electric. Knight Electric, under the authority of an earlier ordinance, was contracted to install generators at five fire stations and the impound lot. At several of the stations, what we found is that the, the piping infrastructure from, on our side of the gas line is antiquated and needs to be upgraded. So this is an $8,899.65 modification, but it allows us to replace that pipe to ensure that the gas is safe and it's not leaking and properly installed.
Absolutely. We want to make sure that our, our employees that are working at those fire stations are in a safe environment, so absolutely in support of this and absolutely in support of generators because we want to make sure that, that they're always prepared that, so that if electricity goes out anywhere in the city that, in these locations, that they're able to still continue to do their work and, and meet the needs of our, of our community. So, thank you.
Yeah, over the past decade or so, the city's done quite a bit of work in a variety of city facilities for generators because we realize that city services are often most critically provided during bad storm events. We all remember the ice storms and stuff like that we've had in the past, and something tells me it'll happen again in the future. Ordinance 2432 is, is a, an ordinance that allows us to contract with the Ryder Company, and this is for window repair and replacement at Fire Station 1. That's on the north side of downtown, not too far from the Convention Center. And what we are doing is replacing the windows on the east and west sides, and on the north and south side, we are renovating them. They're, they're being sealed up better. This is a building that was constructed in the early 1980s. It's, it leaks, it's not very energy efficient, and we believe window replacement would dramatically improve its, its comfort and energy efficiency. That ordinance is with the Ryder Company for $340,200. I would point out that we did receive three bids for this. The lowest bidder that bid at $275,000 did not meet the provisions of our pre-qualification process. They weren't pre-qualified as code requires them to be. And the second low bidder, 2K, whose bid was just a little south of the one we're recommending. There were several addenda issued during the bidding process. In other words, we updated the specifications. When the bids come in, in their final form, the vendor has to acknowledge that they received those addenda, and they did not. If were we to contract with them, we would have to waive competitive bidding. So the third lowest bidder, Ryder, met all of the provisions of, of the code, and we're familiar with the firm. They've done work with the city in the past and they do good work.
Okay, I appreciate that you're sharing why we're waiving competitive bidding and this, and you're saying they just didn't do, because obviously general, it's only, you know, $2,200 difference. And so you're saying that they, could you again statewide, they did not meet the specification?
Yeah, just to be clear, we're not waiving competitive bidding. We're just arguing that the two lowest apparent bidders did not comply with one part or another part of the city code provisions, so as a result, we, we threw them out. So the bid we're left with is with Ryder Company. The lowest, again, being one that wasn't properly pre-qualified, and that's been the rule of the land for the last year or so. And the second low did not fully, did, did not fill out the form correctly. There were addenda issued and they did not acknowledge that. And that's, that's a stipulation of the bidding process. Why do we make that, an element of acknowledgement if later on, someone's going to argue that they didn't know something? We could say, well, wait a minute, we issued an addenda. You received that addenda and you acknowledged that when you bid the project. So that's why it's important.
I just want to make sure that any other times we're doing, we're having legislation, that if anyone else doesn't have the addenda, they would not be able to get the bid.
Well, frankly, there was a situation recently where a contractor didn't have that addenda, but the, the other bidder also made, there were some errors in their bidder, their bid, so what we did is we took and recommended the lowest bidder, which was the firm who didn't provide the acknowledgement of the addenda. It really has to be done on a case-by-case basis. From one bid to another, one firm might not comply with one provision, another firm may not follow the other provision.
And that's why it's really important, and we're always talking about, one, the way of competitive bidding, even though this one doesn't apply, we're going to the bidder that's the highest bidder.
Will fully meet all the specifications.
Right. But we want to just continue to make sure that we are, whenever that's happening, that we're always communicating that. And that's one reason why we have these hearings, that I can ask those questions, because I do know that, I think in the past that has happened, that we've, we've allowed that person who didn't have that to still can get the bid. And so as you said, it's going to be a case-by-case basis, but I just would always appreciate the administration making that very clear, not only to me, but the viewing and listening audience.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Ordinance 4266 is a UTC. These are the dollar ordinances we come to council from time to time. And this is for liquid oxygen. It's used by the Division of Water and they're the sole user. This is water, a product that's used for the treatment of, it's an oxidation component to treating water so that it's safe and delivered to the customers. When we bid this service, the low bidder, which is the company we're recommending, did not provide what's called an ANSI NSF-60 certification. It was one of the provisions of the bid. And the other bidder took exception to a number of the bid terms. So when we went back to the initial apparent low bidder who didn't provide that certification and asked them to provide the certification, they did provide it to us, but because it came after the fact, the only way for us to contract with them is to waive competitive bidding. They meet it and every respect, they're, they're a company that's provided the service of the product in the past, but that certificate was something we had asked for that they inadvertently didn't provide.
This was also the lowest and most responsible bidder?
Correct.
Correct, thank you. And it's for $440,000.
Yeah, I apologize, I think I skipped over a little bit. The estimated annual expenditure is $440,000, even though this is a $1. As you well know, agencies can come, they can buy up to $100,000 off a council-established UTC without coming back from, for legislation. Any dollar above that, they would have to come back. But in this case, the sole user is water and they will come back, I'm sure.
Thank you.
The next ordinance, 4209, is for the Division of Fleet Management. This is with a company called Advanced Fuel Systems, and their work for us is to assess, repair, and remediate city fuel and generator site locations. As you know, in recent years, Fleet has taken over the responsibility of the fueling infrastructure as well as generators. Here to four, here to, a couple of years ago, they were scattered, if you will, throughout multiple city agencies. As part of our stewardship of those assets, we need to renovate them from time to time or conduct work on those assets to make sure that they're functioning properly. Obviously, we don't want them to leak or provide inaccurate data. This is a contract that was bid a year, over a year ago, but it had provisions for modification and renewal, and this is a renewal.
And the cost is $200,000?
Correct.
Thank you, okay.
Ordinance 2513 is a UTC for traffic detector loop sealant. You pull up to the traffic signal and there's that little square area that's in front of the signal and there's a buried wire there. You have to put a lubricant or a sealant in that to make sure that it doesn't corrode and that it stays down there. That's what actuates the signal when a driver or vehicle comes up to it. I still have to explain that often to people, but the trick of driving in Columbus, I guess. But the, the, the bid was issued, two bids were received, and Pathmaster provided the overall best, lowest and best bid. The estimated annual expenditure is $50,000, and this is a contract that is initially through 2017, but there is a provision for a renewal thereafter if all goes well. And this is a company that we've worked with in the past.
And so you solicited 72 bids, were solicited, and only two people, two were received?
Mm-hmm. Sometimes, by the way, you can see a large number of solicitations, because a lot of firms may register for a given commodity, but that doesn't necessarily mean they bid on it. They're basically saying, hey, I'm here, and whenever you issue a bid in that category, please let me know. But that doesn't mean they'll necessarily bid. But all of our bids, it is not just through notification. They're published in the city bulletin, which is obviously issued by the city clerk, and anyone has the opportunity, even if they're not registered, to receive bids or be notified of bids. Ordinance 2514 is another UTC. In this case, it's for school speed limit sign supports. Bottom line is, it's the bracket that holds signs up. This is used for speed limit signs, beacons, and associated equipment along the roadways. This is, again, competitively bid. 81 bids were solicited, two were received, and we are recommending that the bid be awarded to General Supply and Services. The estimated annual expenditure is $30,000, and public service is the primary user. Ordinance 2538 is another UTC for traffic pedestal poles to be used by public service, again, the primary user. These are, you know, traffic signals and associated equipment along the various roadways of the city. It's used throughout, 55 bids were solicited, three bids were received. The low bid, best bid, was Pathmaster for all items. The estimated annual expenditure is $50,000, and this is a contract that would operate through April of 2018. And as with many bids, it'll have a, a one-year option to extend beyond that, again, if all goes well. Ordinance 2562 is an ordinance that authorizes Facilities Management to contract with Windscapes. Yes, we are thinking of winter, even though it seems warm today. Windscapes provides landscape management, maintenance, but importantly, this time of year, snow removal services, where we have responsibility, Facilities has responsibility for certain public, like police precincts, general fund, administrative-type buildings is where they would do their snow plowing. This, this bid was bid last year, and it has four one-year renewal options. This is the second of those four one-year renewal options. The dollar cost of the contract is $300,000, and again, is administered by Facilities Management.
But the original contract was in '13?
Yeah, late '13 for essentially the '14 year there. I think that was probably a 30-day ordinance at the time, but they're, they're one-year cycles.
And this is second of the four-year cycle?
Second of, of four-year renewal options.
And the cost is?
$300,000.
$300,000, thank you.
Ordinance 2563 authorizes Finance and Management to contract with Decker. We have a contract with them for pavement and parking-related activity. In this instance, we're doing some work for Police Substation 8 and 16 that's located at 333 West Town. It's just south of COSI. And what they'll do in that parking lot is to mill various sections and level the area, re-stripe it. It's looking a little bit tired, and it'll, you know, allow better use for the, obviously, police, the, parking their employee vehicles as well as visitors to the station. It's, it's in need of renovation. Its cost here is $85,360, and that would be paid for by, by the Public Safety Department. Ordinance 2565 is an ordinance similar to the one I spoke of earlier with Krieger on the west side, except this is for 515 Short Street. American Electric Power is requesting a non-exclusive temporary electric utility easement as part of the ODOT project for the 7071. We're viewing this in part as intergovernmental cooperation and support, obviously assisting ODOT in their efforts to redo that roadway when that day comes. As well, it, it will allow city MLP Electric to connect AEP poles in, in exchange, so it's beneficial to our electricity division to allow this temporary easement and beneficial to ODOT's project when that phase of the I-7170 project continues. There is no dollar cost associated with that ordinance. Ordinance 2566 is a contract on behalf of Facilities Management with SA Communal, and this is for the replacement of a fire alarm system at the police shooting range in the SWAT at McKinley Avenue. The existing fire system is obsolete. It's no longer being manufactured or supported. Communal provides not only annual maintenance services to our fire alarm systems, but the contract allows for upgrades and renovations that are also necessary as part of that. Again, this is for the SWAT and police shooting range off of McKinley Avenue. The dollar cost of this is $43,179.40 and is being paid for by Public Safety, but we are administering the contract for them. The next ordinance is 2576, yet another UTC, and this is for plumbing supplies to be used by various city agencies. The term of the contract is through March 31 of 2018 and can be extended an additional year mutually agreed to by both parties. 137 bids were solicited, one was received. The company is Westwater Supply. The estimated annual expenditure is $750,000. Again, this is a dollar.
Since this is, let me ask you a question. Since it's an annual expense, typically do we spend the $750,000 each year?
The way a UTC is bid is, we're, we're looking back, going forward. It could be lower, it could be higher, but that is a, it's our best estimate of all the agencies that buy from this product-service area what they would spend in a given year. It can be higher or lower. The benefit to the city of a UTC is there's no guarantee. If there's a year in which the city only needs $5 worth of plumbing supplies, then, then that's what the contract calls for. But, you know, obviously, the, the estimated annual could be higher than 750, but 750 is the average.
In terms of this plumbing contract, do you, you know, keep like a track of the plumbing, you know, needs that we're going to have, so that even having a UTC with this amount of money, of course, you said you don't have to necessarily spend that, but do we track what we know we're going to have to do when replacing a plumbing and things of that nature?
Certainly, things are planned as far as routine maintenance, but, you know, we've all been victim to a leaky faucet in a bathroom or a kitchenette or, you know, even a waterline that cuts through an office. And I would point out, this is used by all city agencies, so public utilities, recreation and parks, finance and management. We have a lot of pipe. Ordinance 2510 is an ordinance with Fleet Management, and you've seen this before. This is to modify and extend our contract with Gresham Smith &amp; Partners. You've been aware that we've been working on an environmental management system within Fleet Management. Back to my earlier point where we had the contract for $200,000 to maintain and to renovate our tank infrastructure. Our EMS program goes to all of the ways in which we affect the environment and through the use of our fluids, liquids, chemicals, and this program is, it's not just a desire to be green, because green is valued to be good. It's also legal. It's, it's regulatory, it's required. We have a responsibility. And we, we, we have engaged this firm beginning two years ago, so this would be the third modification. They've also provided for us stormwater prevention pollution plans, which are requirements when you have a lot of vehicles on a given site. So we, we've had a good relationship with that firm. This continues that effort to the dollar amount of $406,357, and it's funded through Fleet Management. Toward the end of the legislative packet I provided, we provided to you a few days ago, there are five ordinances that, two of which are numbered and three of which are not yet numbered, but they are essential to, you know, city operations, so they should appear in front of council on the 26th of, of October. The first ordinance, which is again unnamed or unnumbered, is for, on behalf of the Division of Police, and what this buys is crime lab DNA supplies.
And here's my question, I mean, we mentioned this earlier, since we're going to have a hearing on the 20th, do you still want to discuss it even though it's not in front of me yet?
It's, it's your good call. We might be lucky and get him in for the 19th. You know, obviously, they have to process through the system. We don't always have full control over that. But if, if, if that be your wish, that's fine. The, these five ordinances are, we believe, important to be acted on this month.
And so my question would be, and I, I know they're important, and all of the legislation's important. So my question is, I know we're going to have a hearing on the 20th?
Then we can wait.
And so I would prefer to have the legislation in front of me?
Sure.
And then we could have that?
Absolutely.
And then we'll have it on for the 26th.
All right, in which case, those five, and then there's a series of some other UTCs that are important but less important.
Okay, let's just hold off until the 26th.
So with that, that concludes what Finance expects or hopes to have in front of the council on either the 19th or the 26th.
All right, thank you, Deputy Director Bush.
Thank you very much.
Well, now we'll have a presentation of the legislation by Deputy Direct, Deputy Treasurer, Deputy City Treasurer Talia Brown. Good evening, Ms. Brown.
Good evening, thanks for having us today. We just have one ordinance that is coming up for council consideration in October, and this ordinance number is 2568-2015. This ordinance authorizes the city treasurer to modify its contracts for various banking services with JP Morgan Chase Bank and Huntington Bank. It'll authorize the expenditure of up to $211,000 from various funds within the city, and we are asking to declare an emergency. In the way of some background information on this ordinance, the Treasurer's Office issued an RFP for various banking services back in October of 2012. The Depository Commission received and reviewed these proposals from six local banks, and these are all currently eligible depositories with the city. They recommended, subject to council approval, the award of various banking services to specific banks in April of 2013. And these contracts cover a period of 10 years with one-year renewal options. That began in June of 2013, and it covers us through May of 2023, but those are subject to annual appropriations and approval of those contracts year-to-year by city council. Those contracts and expenditures began in May of 2013, and each year, we provide funding for additional resources for those services. This is our third year on these contracts. Earlier this year, we brought to council with Ordinance 1101-2015, our biggest piece of legislation this year, which was about $2.1 million for banking services. And now we wish to provide additional resources for banking on our contract with JP Morgan Chase. And our other modification with this ordinance will be adding additional funds to the Treasurer's contract for credit card processing with Huntington Merchant Services, and this will be on behalf of the Recreation and Parks Department, Building and Zoning, Health, and Public Utilities. Those are the divisions which need to add additional funding on to, for credit card processing. We request this as emergency, just so that we can get these funds posted to our accounting system as soon as possible. These funds are budgeted and available within various appropriations in 2015. And that's all we have, thank you.
Thank you for the presentation and giving us a history again on this legislation. And so this is $45,000 is for going to these banks?
For JP Morgan.
JP Morgan Chase, and then $166,000 for the Huntington, is that?
That's correct.
That's correct, okay. Well, thank you, and thank you for, again, giving us a thorough, a thorough presentation of this legislation.
Thank you.
Thank you. And my final committee this evening, I'm going to transition to Health and Human Services, and it will be focusing on the health component of the humans, health of the human services. Dr. Long, please present your legislation.
Good evening, Council Chair Tyson, and I appreciate the health component of human services. Well, you know what, it is a component of that, and I apologize, I'm having to move over so I can see you, so it's good to see you this evening. So we have six items for your consideration, the committee's consideration tonight. The first is a revenue contract. We know we like those a lot, that's when we get paid. So this is a revenue contract with the Columbus Public Schools, Ordinance Number 2437-2015. And this ordinance will actually enable the Health Department, Columbus Public Health and the Board of Health, to receive $10,000 from the Columbus Public Schools for services that we continue to offer to them, which really are special consultation, being responsive 24/7 to their needs of their, both their students, their employees, et cetera. So again, it is for public health consultation services. Just so you know, the kinds of things we make specially available to our Columbus schools. We start tomorrow immunizing for influenza in the schools. I believe for the next two days, we have 500 students signed up to get flu vaccines, so we're excited about that. We don't do that for every school that has Columbus students, but we certainly make an effort for all Columbus City schools, and actually, we do also do diocesan schools and other schools in Columbus as both we have time and they have an interest. So again, this is a contract that would run for $10,000 between August 7th, 2015 through August 6th, 2016.
This is a great partnership between the city of Columbus Public Health and Columbus City Schools, and certainly, it's appreciate all that. I know that, that Columbus Public Health is doing to work with the city school system to make sure that our children and their families get the healthcare and any other services that you could provide for our young people and their families.
Well, that's always a journey. We're continuing on that journey to try and work with partners. Actually, there was a, a nice announcement this morning, actually, I think it happened yesterday, at the school board of a partnership with the Nationwide Children's Hospital that will be increasing their school-based health clinics. So that's terrific. Of course, it's my job to push everyone to do more, more time and more schools.
I think it's important that you're focusing on making sure that we are going where the people happen to be.
Yeah.
And that's critical, so, thank you.
That's exactly right. The next item, Ordinance Number 2440-2440-2015, is also a revenue contract. This is with Columbus Neighborhood Health Centers. They do business as Primary One Health. as Primary One Health. Um, this is actually an agreement where they are paying us for the services of an advanced practice nurse for one day a week of that nurse's services. So the amount of funds in that contract are $11,500. Um, again, this, um, agreement would run from September 21st, 2015 through February 29th, 2016. This is an ongoing relationship that we have with Primary One Health. And again, we're trying to efficiently use the services of an advanced practice nurse between our two organizations.
Thank you. That's, that's key. I know in that relationship to make sure that we're utilizing the different, what do I use, but the different healthcare.
Providers, practitioners, right?
Right. And then making sure that they have an opportunity to be able to utilize too, the relationship that we have with Primary One. And so I just appreciate having this position because it's to connect those services. So thank you.
Correct. The next item is actually really a twofer. It's ordinance number 2503-2503-2015. It actually is funds, and there's several of these that are coming up, funds that have been very recently, um, shared with us, um, to allow us to do some media campaigns in very short order. So the first, um, actually is our funds coming from the Ohio Department of Health. It actually will expand an ongoing agreement and contract we have with them for sexually transmitted disease control. They are sharing with us at this point, an additional grant fund of $20,000 to allow us to address a syphilis outbreak. And I know we've talked about the numbers and the high numbers of syphilis that we have in this community. So this would be a syphilis awareness campaign, again, trying to make sure that persons at risk know just what we want them to do, which is to get tested. So, um, again, I know you're always interested in the numbers. So in this case, we already, we are, we had a 50% increase in the cases that we had, and we already had quite a few from 2012 to 2013. So from 2013 to 2014, we had a 50% increase in our numbers of cases. And already this year, we're seeing at least a 35% increase from last year. So we're very concerned. We also have had, um, multiple cases. Last year, we had eight. Um, this year already, we've had four congenital syphilis cases. So this is a, uh, woman who was pregnant, who was not screened appropriately, um, during pregnancy, or at least not screened and treated. So it is actually sadly a failure of the medical system, but the infant was born congenitally with syphilis, and that can have some long-term implications for the infant. So again, we have a, a big problem in this community. We're doing everything that we can, and we appreciate the additional $20,000 from the state to allow us to do a little bit more as far as media outreach. The second component is, again, something I believe you are aware of, and we appreciate your support. Uh, we implemented in May, something called PREP, which is pre-exposure prophylaxis. This is using an HIV medication to enable persons who may be at risk for HIV to actually preemptively prevent getting HIV infection. And so we continue to push the source of these funds, again, through the Ohio Department of Health, but as from a federal HIV prevention grant, would allow us another, uh, $20,000 for a media awareness campaign. So with respect to that, we actually, in both cases, we will be working with Gatehouse Media. This is actually an organization where we have contracts already existing that were competitively bid. But in both of these cases, because of the rapid nature and the need to spend, expend the grant funds in a rapid period of time, we did not have sufficient time to go out for, um, bids on this project. So again, we would respectfully request a waiver of the competitive bidding provisions, um, of the city code. I would share that this is, I mean, um, a female-owned business corporation that has been very effective and very efficient in, in media purchase.
Dr. Long, first, uh, I just, again, appreciate the work that you've been doing around, um, certainly STDs and HIV and AIDS. And the question that I will have really around this is that, uh, I recognize why we have to have the, why it was competitively bid on, on previous, um, other campaigns. But my question is, just based upon the individuals that we know that, especially around HIV and AIDS, that, um, the high numbers of people of color that tend to, are contracting HIV and AIDS, that my question really is about the cultural competency of, of this organization, um, to be able to make sure that we're hitting these audience of individuals that certainly between, you know, the STDs, but I know specifically around HIV and AIDS. Can you talk to me a little bit about, you know, Gatehouse and their work, being culturally competent to be able to hit the audiences that need to get this information?
I can. Um, and actually, this does go through my colleague, Jose Rodriguez, who spends particular attention to that. We want to be sure we're hitting, because these are not very, it's not a large amount of money, to be sure that we're having the biggest impact. So yes, and actually, I can specifically, because I was just involved in the conversation on a, a future item that's very similar with Gatehouse around flu vaccine. But again, uh, they are purchasing airtime on hip hop radio stations. They are purchasing airtime in places that wouldn't be the, um, place that some of us might listen, others might listen a lot. So again, they are specifically going after a target audience of men who have sex with men, African-American men, um, younger persons, probably in the ages of 15 to 35. Um, those are probably two different markets, actually. But nonetheless, they are being very specifically both directed, but they come back and show us the numbers that indeed, this is the market that you need. If, if this is what you want to do, this is where you need to place the ads. So we pay a lot of attention to that.
Thank you, and I appreciate you saying that to me because that is, I mean, we're watching the numbers just grow year after year, and, and we've got to begin to figure out how to not have the numbers continue to grow. I mean, obviously, this isn't a lot of money, and I understand that. But it's, I mean, we've had these conversations, I know with Minority Health, which is under your, um, your area, just what can we do to try to help this situation? So, um, thank you for sharing this. Of course, I, um, will happily share this information with my colleagues, but I know that we've just got to have to keep working hard around this area because these numbers just cannot continue to, to grow.
So we completely concur. And the only reason we have this money is because I shook, shook down the State Health Department, and frankly, I want to keep shaking them. I asked them for more money. They made this amount available. I'm going to keep pushing them. Um, we have done quite a bit, um, as a city, but we clearly have an issue and a problem in our state, but we're the ones right here in Columbus driving it. So I continue to hope, and I don't know if we'll get it yet this year, but continue to push for additional support from our state.
Thank you.
So the next item is actually connected to the Central Ohio Trauma System. We call it COTS. Um, they have received funds from the Centers for Disease Control, um, through the Ohio Department of Health to the Central Ohio Trauma System. They are contracting with us. So this is to accept and appropriate a grant, um, for the Central Ohio Trauma System Coalition, or a health coalition. They want us to host, and we have agreed to, um, to do that for the Central Ohio Trauma System. It's a very small amount of money, $5,000 in grant money. Um, but we agree, and we have, as, as you know, Council Chair Tyson, committed to, um, continue to coordinate all of the emergency response partners, um, here in, in Central Ohio. I know you've joined us before for the Columbus Metropolitan Medical Response System. This group is actually an add-on to that group. Uh, we meet separately, but soon thereafter, and it is of just the healthcare partners. We're actually adding some other members, the skilled nursing facilities, urgent cares, et cetera, that have not been typical and usual members of our healthcare response system. So again, the $5,000 is not very much money, but we absolutely believe that these are important partners to have connected to our emergency response system. So indeed, uh, again, we would respectfully request that, um, council would pass when it's considered this ordinance number 2536 to allow us to accept these grant funds for a countywide healthcare coalition in Franklin County.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I wish I could get more money for that as well. Um, the next item, it sounds like I have a theme here, doesn't it? The next item is what I referred to. These are some funds that we actually, and we received the grant funds just, well, just in the last little bit, from Franklin County Public Health. It really is coming from the county commissioners via Franklin County Public Health, um, to support a vaccination and public health media campaign. So the contract is, again, with Gatehouse Media, but this is around influenza vaccination. And so the amount of funds is $29,510. We want to get this out because it's flu vaccine season right now. Um, so these funds will be used to implement a vaccination and public health awareness media campaign. Uh, we need to spend it by December 31st, 2015. We hope to spend it much more rapidly than that. Um, and again, under the terms of this agreement, uh, we will, again, trying to push all of our Franklin County residents to understand the importance of flu protection, um, and combating the spread of, of influenza infection. So again, we're encouraging every, every member of our community who's over six months of age to get flu protection this season. And again, um, right now would be the time to be seeking that from a healthcare provider, from a public health agency, or clearly from a neighborhood grocery store, um, or pharmacy.
And I also see that this, the priority is given to residents who are unable to pay for the flu vaccine, such as uninsured or underinsured. How will we target this audience?
So again, um, the media campaign itself is broad for all of us. The public health agencies underneath this, we actually put out lots of messaging, um, as we can. And of course, we let other providers know that we are willing to step up and provide flu vaccine for persons who are uninsured or underinsured. Um, so again, all of the free clinics, um, in town know that they can turn to us for flu vaccine. Um, we actually sponsor on Monday evenings with the largest free clinic, the Physicians Care Connection, that happens to be right at our location at 240 Parsons. We, again, provide immunizations, flu vaccine immunizations during the fall for all the persons that they're seeing.
Thank you. And my last question, I guess, is, there's obviously a need for people to continue to get these flu vaccinations. And do you have any idea of the people that don't get it? So.
Yes, indeed. Sadly, we still have a problem in our nation, um, and we still have a problem in our state and community, even in our older adults, which I think for many 65 and older, they have heard for many, many years, the drumbeat of get a flu shot. I was just reviewing some data with our State Health Department partners, and I believe for Ohio, the adult immunization, the older adult immunization rate is 65%. So 35% of our over 65-year-olds are not getting flu protection, and the numbers go precipitously down for that for younger people. I can tell you that healthcare providers has, over the last few years, zoomed up. Uh, I can tell you that we are nearly 100% for our Columbus Public Health, um, healthcare providers, um, and those who work in our health services area. And we require all of our employees to let us know whether or not they're immunized. Our area hospitals take it very seriously, but again, we would like to, um, or would love to see our schools take it more seriously. In Japan, what they have learned is by immunizing, immunizing young children and school-aged children, they have actually seen a huge drop-off in the numbers of deaths that they have in their older adults. And it turns out that young children are great spreaders. Um, and also, they probably love to jump up on grandma or grandpa's, you know, lap, or chair, or bed, um, and get right in their face and probably spread the influenza virus. So again, there have been other strategies invoked in other countries that seem to be quite effective. Uh, we have not yet, in this nation, been able to be that effective, uh, but we're going to continue to push. And that's one reason why we go to the schools. Um, and we push very hard, um, with our colleagues at Children's Hospital, um, and in the community. We're talking about flu protection for everyone who's over six months of age, everyone.
Thank you, and thank you for sharing those numbers.
So the last item is related to this as well. This is a vaccine grant program, a project grant. We actually just learned about it and are very excited about it. It's ordinance 2587. These are funds that we have been asking for and weren't sure we would get, but we did. Um, so the Ohio Department of Health is granting, um, to us, and so this ordinance would allow us to accept and appropriate $58,487.65 in grant funds from them, um, for the period, uh, September 25th through December 31st. And this would allow us to purchase vaccine for children. Um, and this is purchase a vaccine for children who would not receive it otherwise. So, um, it allows us to purchase vaccine for people who, and children who might have private insurance or who have no insurance. Um, the state has decided, um, through a policy decision that whether we agreed with it or not, I, I understand their point, but we were very concerned. They made a decision that because of, um, the increases in the Medicaid, um, insurance, the child health insurance program, as well as the marketplace, the Affordable Care Act, that they were going to back away and not purchase vaccine. Um, we specifically, um, shared with them that we see many people who are undocumented, um, who would likely never be eligible for any of those insurance coverages. And so they said, well, you'll probably have to go it on your own. Um, the reality is, we have continued to say that's not right. And so while, um, we weren't sure, they actually have come through with some funds to allow us to purchase vaccine for persons who either have private insurance. And of course, we turned back and billed for that, but it's those who are uninsured and are likely never to be insured, um, that we were most concerned about. And so this, these will allow us to provide, to purchase a number of different kinds of vaccine. You may ask, as you often do, how, what kind of vaccine, and for how many would this provide? And honestly, I don't know the answer yet. We're still trying to determine what we feel we need. Um, so, and obviously, there's different vaccines, and they have different price points.
Well, first of all, I'd just say congratulations for you for being, continuing to be persistent to get those dollars, and that's their solely needed. And I, and again, you gave a, um, in your presentation, you certainly did share the importance of, there's a lot of individuals in our community that are undocumented, that will never be able to get insurance, and, but they're still live in our communities. And so we want to make sure that they remain healthy and that they don't, you know, again, pass any sorts of, um, illnesses to others. So I just, again, I appreciate your tenacity, and this is, will be, I'm sure, dollars well spent by Columbus Public Health to help children to be able to, um, get their vaccination and move forward. So, thank you.
You bet. Thank you very much.
And so with that, I am going to say thank you to Deputy Director Bush, to, um, our Deputy City Treasurer, Ms. Talia Brown, and again, our Health Commissioner, Dr. Teresa Long, for presenting the legis-
Could I make one?
Sure, you may.
More comment for you?
Yes, you may.
I know you'd like people to be aware of, of important events that are coming up. And so there is an exciting event. As you know, uh, you and we have been very committed to try and help people understand all kinds of health issues. We've been talking about vaccine and infectious diseases, but another one that we're very concerned about is infant mortality. And we have been working closely with many partners, but indeed, what we've learned is that there are many infants who are dying, um, in our community sadly, or, well, because of unsafe sleep practices. So we're beginning a new, um, program called the Safe Sleep Ambassadors Program. We are going to be training, um, anyone who would like to learn about, um, safe sleep practices. And of course, I know we've talked about the ABCs of safe sleep. So it means alone, on your back, and in a crib, an empty crib. But we will be doing our first training, and we're sending it, um, far and wide, but on Saturday, October the 14th. Wait a minute. Did I just say the wrong date? That's a terrible thing. It's, it's, um, hold on. I want to be sure I do have the right date. Um, and we would welcome anyone. We will be sending this information out. We have many people connected to. That is not the right date. I apologize. It's actually the 17th. That didn't sound right. We're doing a special, um, church-related one on October 14th, and then on Saturday, October 17th, from 10 to 12, at Columbus Public Health. We will be having a special training for any and all who would like to be a Safe Sleep Ambassador, just two hours. Um, we ask that people would turn around and then educate others in their life. Ideally, we'd love them to talk to 10, um, over some period of time. But again, to try and be sure that we're spreading the word in a meaningful way about the importance of safe sleep for, for all of the infants in our community. So again, um, at Columbus Public Health, 240 Parsons Avenue, Saturday, October the 17th, from 10 to 12.
Thank you for sharing that information. So hopefully, there'll be many people who are reviewing this and listening to this hearing, and will want to be a Safe Sleep Ambassador, to make sure to give our babies an opportunity to, not only to, to live their first year of life, but to live a very healthy and productive life. So thank you, and thank you for being innovative and, um, coming up with a Safe Sleep Ambassador. So thank you so very much. So again, thank you, Dr. Long. Always, in these hearings, I want to thank my council members and their staffs, who really work hard to, um, make sure that our community continues to move forward. I want to thank the legislative aides that work with my committees, which is Tom Diamond for Health and Human Services and Workforce Development, and Kate Pichotti, who staffs Finance. Also want to thank my staff, Nicole Harper and James Lewis. And now we have another new addition to our staff, Mr. Matthew Noling, who will be helping us in our, uh, area. And then, of course, the hard-working team of CTV, who make these hearings possible. And finally, the residents of our city, it is really, um, our pleasure to be able to work with you, to make this- to make this city the best place in the country to live, work, and to raise a family. And so, we serve you with pride, and thank you for allowing us to serve. And with that, our hearing is adjourned. Have a great evening, everyone.